The achievements made over the last 10 years range from filling potholes, to repaving streets, to renovating and building new parks, fields, to sponsoring motions for abatements for senior citizens and veterans and those with limited abilities. There have been many achievements that I can't just name because there's just so many. They've been there for two years. But these are not mine alone. And for the new council coming in, first I congratulate you. But what I want to tell you, my personal wisdom is there's no I in team. And none of these accomplishments that were made in the past 10 years of me serving on the city council would have been made without the past and current administration, my colleagues on the city council, the city clerk, Madam Clerk Ashley, Joanne, and their dedicated staff, the department heads. It's all a collective effort. No one gets anything done as a city councilor solely. You need to compromise, you need to work one of each other. You can't be closed-minded. And that's my advice to the incoming council. I've been doing this for a long time. And the education I've got out of this is beats any college degree you could have. Just the shared experiences with my colleagues, constituents, it's amazing. Each decision I made, every initiative taken, and every challenge overcome is a testament to our unity as a community and our resolve in shaping the Riviera. And that's why I got into public service, because I wanted to make a change. I have the passion and drive that each and every one of us that sit on this council have today. I extend my deepest gratitude once again to my colleagues because these achievements would not be accomplished without them. Some have passed, some no longer serve with us, some are currently not here. And it makes you appreciate the input that everyone adds and the asset that they are to the council. Each and every one who has served over the years on the council brought something unique to the council chambers. And that's what makes us thrive. That's what makes us thrive as a community as well. Each and every one are different. We have our own ideas, we have our own suggestions. And collectively, that's how we make change. I also want to thank my family. My sister Diane who's here and my partner Rich, I love you. Without you, there'd be a backbone. Because without that support, you're going to go downhill. Because it's not all bouquets and smileys and emoticons. It's tough being a city councilor. It's not reporting all the time. There are some times where you can give certificates, make recognized community heroes, which are great, you know? But at the end of the day, you have to remember, stay humble to who you are and never change. When I first got on the city council, there was a ward councillor by the name of Rich Penner. Now, being the first gay elected city councillor, he came up to me and he said to me, "What do I?" He said, "You, be you. Don't ever change who you are. Don't ever compromise your integrity and be yourself all the time." And that's how I governed and that's how I stayed on the city council, by being honest and trying to listen and be open-minded. And I stayed grounded and... Thank you, and I want to thank everyone who's been there for me.
Next up, we have John Howard, Ward 5 City Councillor. Served May of 2000 through December of 2021, and then July '22 through December '23.
First of all, I want to tell you a little story about the first night they came on the city council that I think is sort of funny. Well, it really wasn't funny, but it was a little comical. We were talking about street sweeping in the city. And first, they came up, they said, "Who does the street sweeping? When did they do it? Why? Where?" And I brought to light one important thing, that we were sharing a street sweeper with Chelsea. And that's the guy's honest truth. And it ended very quickly when I hit my wife, okay? We were sweeping the streets like twice a week or a month or something like that. It was crazy. And I want to talk about the accomplishments that we made in this city in the past 20 years or 22 years, that's how long I've been on the council. Those accomplishments were made with all kinds of appreciation and things said by my colleagues and working together and getting this done and that done and the other thing. And the first thing that came before us was Dr. Paul Deacon and the soup tennis schools and Ms. Carol Ty. And they wanted to build new schools, they said we needed them. And one of the things I said, "I want to go around and look at some of the schools, look at the infrastructure." This wasn't comical either. I went down to part of their school and they had sticks holding the windows up, okay? And I'll never forget that, as I moved my hand, one of these windows came down and just missed my hand. That convinced me we needed new schools. So as a result of that, the proposal was five new schools that'd cost $85 billion, which seemed to be a lot of money back then. And $85 billion, I said to myself, "Such eight and a half million dollars." You're going to spend eight and a half million dollars on repairs in the school system over the next five years. So we went ahead and we built those schools. Then along came 50 rent-a-car. And we all realized we were in need of a police station over on the Parkway. Well, wherever we put it, we needed a police station. People were literally walking out of the police station in the middle of the night because we didn't have the proper security there. And it wasn't anyone's fault, it wasn't the police department or the officers. It was the building's fault, that building was ancient. So along came 50 rent-a-cars. George Law and I put a motion in to create a rent-a-car surcharge. $10 per car, rent-a-the-car for a night or a year, we paid $10. I think the first year, we raised something like $40 million. Oh, no, I'm sorry, $400,000 for a police station. Everything we worked out, Jimmy Guy will let it go as we all know. And we went ahead and we built a police station down on the Parkway. And it sits there and it's pretty exciting. We know what a difference that matters today compared to what it was in school. There's no comparison. And since then, we built a public works facility. We built three new fire stations. Our three-day emergency auto fire station. Ward 1 and 2 finally got a brand-new building down there. And Ward 5 will be completing our fire station sometime in July. Actually, we're a little ahead of schedule on that. Okay? The other thing we did, we built the public works facility. So there are a lot of things to see. We still have miles and miles to go. And three things I think are so necessary to this city moving ahead. Number one, a high school, a must. You can't deprive your kids in this city of adequate education and you're not going to get that unless you build a new high school. And the other big problem in the city that I feel seems to be the big problem, and it's not the city's problem, it's a problem... They're building 3,000 units right now on reconstruction down in the city of Lynn. The old Dickinsona Lane lot, that's being built. What do we do when we're there? They wanted us to sit back and do nothing, all right? I couldn't agree with that. I think what we built, what we're doing right now, we need. I think it's a plus for the city and it will produce permanent revenue down the road, okay? You can't build buildings, you can't build schools, fire stations, pump stations or anything else without growth. It's impossible, you need that revenue coming in. And the next thing would be, to our sake and concern, is the traffic. The rich traffic in the city, so the question, where are we creating the traffic? Traffic is being created off of retail. So what I suggested, we got a $4 million grant already for design. It'd be new station, a rapid transit station down at Wendell Lane, where you would, if you're coming from Manchester, Nashville, wherever you're coming from, be able to say, "Take the train, you're off there, you go over the closed, well, it's safe walkway. If you're on your train, it'd be a train and you go right to the... It's Crystal River Station, you go to downtown Boston, it's an entry district. That itself will take traffic properly. Notchell Road, the Boulevard, 107, all of the major areas in this city. Society realizes what we're doing here. Where are we creating the traffic? You're there and you're sitting in the Boulevard any morning of the week and you'll see maybe one or two cars come over every half hour, every 15 minutes. And you see the streams of traffic coming down from the mountain. So these are important things. And our third major project, I think, is flooding in this city. We have to address the flooding. It was a project proposed three different times down on Mills Avenue to build 50, 30. The last one was 70 units of home and common housing. And guess what? We bought it, they never got it, and they never got any of it because they just purchased that property. It's 50,000 acres, 50,000 square feet, and no one is ever going to build on that. It's going to be used for the kids in this city and the adults, for community voting. And that's a positive thing, to our sake and concern. And you know, we've got a guy on Ward 6, Barney Charver. I don't know if anybody knows Barney, I'm sure some of you do. He has done so much work, positive work, for the city we're there on flooding. You can take a five-foot pipe that was put in 50, 60, 70 years ago and it's been reduced to diameter to one inch. That's two things. It cuts down the water usage in your home and it also cuts down the use of the water going in up to the fire hydrant. We have nothing to do with controlling it, the fire upstairs. But we have to give them the volume if we want to have good fire protection in the city. So with that, I want to thank all of my friends who supported me in the past. I see them all the time, we have good relationships, and I know I'll see them again. Thank you very much for being here.
Next up is Dan Bresow, Councillor Large. Served on Revere City Council, March of 2000 through December of 2011, January '18 through December '19, January '22 through December '23.
Well, this was unexpected. We're going to talk, but nobody can hear us except for those of us in the room. So I'm not going to say too much. This one certainly, thank my colleagues, past and present. We've had a lot of fun up here, we've done some good work, and it really's been an honor to serve our community, it really has. John had mentioned, possibly Stephen had mentioned, the work that you guys do, Ashley and Joanne and Debbie before, and John Henry before that. I mean, really, without you guys, you know, we can't do our jobs. I mean, we lean on you all the time, so thank you for your competency. Thank you for all the work that you do. Something that people generally don't see, I see new colleagues that are here, are soon to be, I'll be a former colleague, I guess, but there's some of you in the room that are going to be, you know, taking your office, raising your right hand, taking your own, sitting up here. You'll be leaning on them, believe me when I tell you. And I see some experience out here. So notwithstanding your experience, you're still going to be leaning on them, the things that happen here in the council chambers. And I think a couple of councillors also mentioned, again, just some unsolicited advice to the new councillors that'll be taking over. Be true to yourself, but also be true to the voters. They're the ones that put you there. And you need to be their voice. At the end of the day, you're going to form your own opinions, but listen to both sides of the story. There's going to be, you know, there's going to be new faces up here. We're going to have a lot of new city councils up here. You're going to have a new executive in the mayor's office. But you're going to have the same problems, and as problems as I see it. Problems that I've heard over the many years that I served in public office. There's the overdevelopment, the traffic, you know, the crime, the drug use, the homelessness. You know, and then of course, the elephant in the room is the new high school. You're going to have to make some real serious decisions. And a lot of it for me, I mean, the detract, the location of it, just financing. It is a huge undertaking. And we've heard two, three, maybe four different finance plans on how we're going to fund it. So, you know, I'm sure you guys will make the right decision. But again, it's a heavy decision that's going to weigh on you and it's certainly going to weigh on the taxpayers. So as much as we need a new high school and we know that, we have to make sure that our eyes are dotted and our keys are crossed going forward. So, you know, I want to wish the new council as well. I want to thank my colleagues for, you know, for, you know... I think that one thing that I really recognized this year is I think everybody pretty much was respectful to each other. So, you know, we had some contentious meetings. Some of it was amongst ourselves, others were amongst the people in the, you know, that happened to come to meetings. But, you know, overall, I think that's a great way to go forward, is to try to collaborate. You know, I always say, me and my wife will agree on everything. It's hard to get 11 people to agree on anyone in particular we're talking. Just be respectful, everyone's got their own, you know... I've said this many times over my time in public office. You know, I'm one vote, I'm just one vote. Respect other people's opinions. If the vote goes your way, it goes your way. If it doesn't go your way... I mean, I've been on the side of 10 to 1 votes many times. But if you believe in it, it's like that old saying. If you don't stand for something, well, it's two different words. If you don't stand for something, you stand for nothing. If you don't stand for something, you fall for anything. I've heard it in two different ways. But the bottom line is, do what you think is best in your mind for our community. Because that's what it comes down to at the end of the day, is helping people in our community and giving them the best quality of life that we possibly can. Okay, so thank you all very much, I appreciate it, and I look forward to seeing you around town.
Next up, we have Richard Jay Serino, Ward 6 Councillor. Served January of 2020 through December of 2023.
Well, we're fortunate that we won't have this 15-minute speech. It looks like we're here to be trying to...
Give it to us.
No, I just want to say thank you first and foremost to my mom and dad, Richard and Gina Serino. Everything that I am, I owe to the opportunities that they gave me, the sacrifices that they made to raise me as, you know, a teen young man I've become. And to my dad, my dad who was helping on the campaign. Politics isn't really our family's thing, I think all of us can attest to this. Politics isn't our family's thing. And it was definitely, we all stepped out of our comfort zones when I made the decision that I wanted to run for Ward 6. And my mom and dad were right behind me. Dad built my signs, dad worked and fixed signs during the storms and stuff during that. That's summer and fall. And mom was my campaign manager, my event planner, reserving spaces for events and stuff. And I would never have been able to win that election without them first to promise. Thank you to mom and dad. I also want to thank, because I see him in the audience tonight, Mr. Rocco Palzone, who as everyone up here probably knows, who, you know, the flooding issues down on Tuscana lab. But Rocco is a family friend and he was with me from day one. So I really, I thank you, I thank you for signing on to me and all the work that we did that year. And I'm glad that the city was able to fix your issue in Ward 6.
Thank you, thank you for recognizing the issue. I appreciate it, and the people on Tuscana Lab too also. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I also see councillor-elect Jan Zio from the audience. And I would not have been able to do my job as effectively as a councillor without our superintendent of the DPW. Mister Jan Zio answers all of our calls. And we are so fortunate to have him as the superintendent of public works. And the rest of you who will be serving with him, you're going to be fortunate to serve with him next year. And last but not least, in the audience, I have my successor, our old family friend, councillor-elect Chris Genino. Sergeant Genino, they're all yours in Houghland. And Chris Genino was my basketball coach when I was little. And obviously, you know, family friends who were way back. He's going to bring a tremendous amount of knowledge to the seat and people of West Virginia and North Virginia are fortunate to have him. I also want to thank Ashley and Joanne, our clerk and assistant clerk, because they truly keep us in line and they help us with all the crazy stuff in terms of procedure and stuff that you may not realize. So thank you to you guys. And to my colleagues, thank you, you have all been wonderful. The most, I think the biggest thing I'm doing this is, you know, working with all of you guys on Monday night dinners after. Councillor Zinn grew up talking when he came in, reminding me that you can have passionate arguments back and forth. Like, at the end of the day, you have to break bread and work together. And I really, I think we've been very collegial this session and I thank you guys for that. I also want to congratulate and wish the best of luck to our mayor-elect. I won't say acting mayor, you know, the mayor-elect. So congratulations. And my hope for you is that you will continue to work well with the council and everybody more collaboratively to move the city together. So I would, if you're in this, I did not thank the people of Ward 6, West Virginia and North Virginia for twice electing me. This has been the most humbling experience of my lifetime to date. It's an experience that I will treasure forever. I will certainly miss the people that I've met along the way, but I'm not going anywhere, so I will still be in the city. You'll still see me walking around, I'll still say hello. But after January 1st, I do look forward to taking a step back for a little while. So with that, thank you, everybody, it's been an honor, and good luck next year.
And our last elected city councillor, Jerry Gonsalves, Councillor Large. Served from January 2020 through December 23.
Well, since Rick and me get a chance to stay pissed at each other, I think I do. But, no, seriously, I first want to take this opportunity to first thank my wife Danielle and my four children. I was a school committee member six years ago and now as a councillor-at-large for the last four years. I want to thank my colleagues that I've had the pleasure of working with. It's been truly an honor to serve with all of you on this council. And I appreciate the friendships that have been made over the years. And I hope that those friendships continue as we go our own way. I also want to give special thanks to my committee members. Those of you that held a sign door not with me 13 years, spreading our message. I wouldn't be standing up here today if not for the overwhelming support of friends, family, colleagues, constituents. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Ashley, Madam Clerk, Ashley Mellett, and Joanne for your guidance, your support, and your friendship. Over the past four years, there have been many, many contentious topics that were debated in these chambers. The budget, the life science, buildings, and the new high school, just to name a few. I won't go into detail. You were always there to make sure we were doing things in the most precisely correct manner. So I appreciate that, I really do. And finally, I want to say thank you to the residents of Riviera. Not just those whose votes elected me here, but everyone. I want to say thank you for trusting me to be your voice. It's truly been an honor to sit on the council and act on behalf of the residents of Riviera. So in that, I say thank you for the honor and the privilege to serve all of you. And I wish the incoming councillors and the new members the best of luck, as well as the mayor-elect to do a great job and continue to represent the city of Riviera. Thank you.
Thank you for participating in tonight's meeting. The Revere City Council now stands adjourned, signed by you. The inauguration ceremony and oath of office for the new city council mayor and school committee members will be held on Monday evening, New Year's Day, January 1st, 2020, or at 7 o'clock in the Susan B. Anthony Auditorium. Wishing all residents a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and be safe and clear.